Good evening, everyone. This is the Committee of the Whole Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities for Monday, June 17, 2019. We have four in place. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Thank you. And the first item on the agenda would be Declaration of Confidentiality. However, the member is not here tonight, so we will put that off until the next one. Now, approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover for approval? Maybe I better ask first, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Did I have approval? Mr. Packwood and Mr. Hunter, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Gary, thank you. And that brings us to disclosure of peculiary interest and the general nature thereof.
None, by me.
Hearing none, thank you. And the minutes will read, there is more, no disclosure. Number four, business arising from the previous Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities Committee, if any. Okay. Hearing nothing. I just have a couple of queries of, if you don't find staff. Anything?
Page.
Okay, on page three of seven, the very last paragraph. I just want to get staff's idea has PMG and Redion been thanked appreciatively for their cleanup work?
Yes, they have certainly.
Letters well.
Thank you. Also, on page five of seven, item number eight, there was a consensus, consensus of the committee to direct staff to review the area and prepare a report for committee with respect to erecting parking signage regarding that. Has staff had a chance to assess that?
We're working on it. Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if it'll be ready for the next Public Works meeting, which actually, we were talking about before the meeting started, may be accelerated a week, so.
Correct, correct, yes.
Certainly do our best, but.
And I'll mention that at the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll move on. And we have delegations tonight. We have two delegations, Query Fox from Mr. Batista and Request for Road Closure and Convenience by Bill Holtzman. Gentlemen, we have a full agenda tonight, so I would ask if you could limit your speeches to approximately 15 minutes. That would be very, very appreciated. And I'm going to call Mr. Batista first for Query Fox.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, I worship members of council and committee members and staff, and I really want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak about Query Fox. Two years ago, a young lad by the name of Mr. Ashney Az, he graduated from the Queen's Engineering Program, and at the time I was still the mayor of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. And he asked me a pointed question. He said, you know what, I don't want to move away to work in Silicon Valley for, you know, $50,000 and pay $50,000. I want to work on something meaningful. And at the time, we were inundated in AMO, as you may recall, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. It put out a tender, or I'd asked for a request for information for a ticketing system for municipalities. So a way that residents could basically put their issues into the hopper and then have them dealt with. And ultimately, so him and I had a lengthy discussion, and we said, you know what, we think we can solve this. I think with your, his know-how and his leading-edge programming skills, let's develop a solution. So when we started to look at the solution, these were some of the key drivers that I had when I was the mayor of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. We really didn't know how many service requests were coming into the municipality, whether it was per day, per week, per month, per year. It was very nebulous, and a lot of the information just went off into the cloud. So things would go by email, things would get lost. And the only time that a councillor or a mayor usually gets a phone call is when things have really gone off the rails and sort of, you know, ended up down the road. So that was one of the key questions. We wanted to know who did the work, because a lot of times, too, there was a lot of overlap in our municipality as to who was doing the work. How well was the work being done? I think we hear feedback sometimes, it says, well, they did it, but, well, it wasn't great. Or we had to redo it. So that was one of the questions, one of the driving factors. This is a key one. How quickly was work being fulfilled? So how do we know how fast we should, we can or should be doing something in our municipality, any municipality? How satisfied was the resident at the end? Were they satisfied with the work that was being done by the municipality? How often do issues repeat? So we know that we get things that come into the municipality, but we don't have any reporting that tells us, how often do you, you know, how often did we get this specific issue this year, this month, this week, today? Are there trends? If we don't have any data, we don't necessarily know if the things that are happening in our municipality from our residents that we're getting, is there a trend? And is there a way that we can actually put some technology or put an answer in front of that resident that will get rid of that particular piece of work? And that's the other thing, too. Then the last one is, can those issues be prevented in the future? So these were all things that drove how we were going to create this tool. Some of the other drivers is we needed better communication. How often have we heard the phrase, well, nobody got back to me? And that happens, we understand, everybody's very busy, but if we can automate that communication tool, that would be a key driver for this solution. Where we saw long lead times for what appeared to be what should have been simple tasks. Or in some cases, if you had tasks that, let's say about five or six residents on the same road had the same issue, and we might have gone out five or six times to deal with the same thing. We know that resources are limited. Certainly, the municipalities themselves are under need to look at ways to do things better, more efficiently, and that was a key driver for our tool. That we needed more information about what was coming from residents. A lot of the time, it was, information was sort of slightly sketchy. Again, we talked about who's doing the work. And what's, the other one, too, is what's the history of this issue? So obviously, the residents of Leeds and the Thousand Islands went in a different direction, so there's a whole new council. And so a lot of the history about resident issues and those things, it disappears. So you need a system, a way to make sure that the history of all the issues that have occurred are there and together. Service level is a key one. We hear service level a lot in the private sector. And what service level means is how fast are you going to do what you say you're going to do, and that the resident's expectations can be that. So if we say that, you know, we're going to get back to you within 24 hours, are we doing that? Can we tell that today? In most cases, we can't. And then what should the service level be? You know how much staff you have. Well, how do you turn that into the solution for the resident? So what we've done is we've created what we are calling the ultimate solution. It's a solution for municipalities. Unlike, I think, what AMO was trying to go for, AMO's solutions typically have been sort of customized solutions from either software companies or customer service. This is dedicated and built specifically for municipalities. So it allows residents to get the answers that they need, but then it also allows for the work to be done and the communications to happen. So at a very high level, I think hopefully you can see that, or you have it in your package, the idea is that, you know, an event or something causes a resident to think of an issue or a query that they want to register. And then they can choose any medium. They can choose, they can go over the phone, through the website, in person, through an application, put their information into the system, and then the system manages where the work needs to go, how the work gets done, all the communications, and then ultimately tracks all that information so that you have it in the future. So a couple of important things as well. Security, as we know, is very important, so it's an extremely secure application. It has to be user-friendly. So the users need to be able to easily create the query. We have a benefit, too, as municipalities, that we can preload a lot of our customer or resident information right into the system. And it needs to be easy to access. So if you're on a mobile device, if you are, have like an Alexa or Google Home type of situation, that you can open queries right from home. And the new vehicles that are all coming out will also have Google Assistant or Alexa on. If you drive by a pothole, you can basically tell Alexa that, hey, I'm just going to identify that there's a pothole. So what we've defined, I'm just going to go to the next slide here, these are the key modules that make up Query Fox. So we have a query module, and this is basically that accepts all the queries from residents through all the multiple channels that I talked about. It organizes the queries, and we are using what we call artificial intelligence. So I am not the programmer, I'm not the technology side of this, but the artificial intelligence allows us to do some key learnings when these things come in and group them and send them to the proper location. We have a module that's called Work. So we all have teams, we have teams that we're responsible for. And the way the Work Module does is it makes sure that that particular query ends up in the right hands right away. So typically, right now, you might get an email that comes in through the system, even if you have, let's say, some type of software, everything else still goes through email, and you might lose it in the mix. With this system, it's all task-driven, but it takes out, cuts out the middle person. You're not passing this from hand to hand. This thing goes right to the individual who needs to do the work. The other thing this system will do as well is that, when we talked about service level, so let's say your promise is you're going to do things in 24 hours. If you are on the verge of missing that, it's going to escalate into that person's supervisor. If there's another issue, it's going to escalate into the next person's supervisor. So there's an escalation system in place to make sure nothing falls off the rails. The communication, QCOM, that's basically where all the communications are automated. So when something comes in, as soon as that work's assigned, the resident automatically gets a notification. The system does that for you, as soon as it's assigned to the worker, as opposed to, again, you know, having to respond to multiple emails. The other thing that the system does is it could group communications or issues that are similar. So we talked about artificial intelligence. So it'll take, let's say you have six or seven people that have all reported the same issue within 24 hours. In today's world, you have to touch, you have a touch point for every single one of those residents. In a Query Fox world, the person in the field who finishes the work, finishes the complete button, all of those pieces of work sent, automatically send out the communication to all of those residents instantly. We have a rating system. Now, this is something that's very unique in terms of sort of two-way openness with our residents, too. So the expectation is that the work that we do, that the work that our teams do, will be rated by the residents. So not only are we measured on service level, but the residents can rate the quality of the work when it was completed. Two other things that we have are Qzone and Qtrend. Qzone is that, basically, will define that if you've got a series of issues that are all happening in one central location, it will send an alert to the senior management team. So the senior management team knows right away, we've got an issue, as opposed to, you know, email might come, one person, it might come through the front desk, it might come... The minute you get something, all of a sudden, you've got zone, a zone notification. And if, as that grows, you'll be able to understand what your issues are in real time. The long-term part of zone is the Qtrend. So trend will basically say, okay, we've got things that are happening over a set period of time. It's a trend. It's not necessarily an emergency that we've defined, but it's something that we need to look at. A good example could be, you know, more like information related to building permits or something like that, where, you know what, people are asking the same question over and over again. So that, that's a trend. Because that same question now needs to be, if we can address that question on our website, we've now eliminated that piece of work. So to give you an idea sort of what a typical dashboard model, so this is an example of our software right now. So a senior administrator could come into work and basically look at the dashboard and get a feel for where things are going. How many queries have been answered, how many new people have registered, where you've missed deadlines, and basically capture the pulse of your operation right out of the gate. This is an example of what a heat zone might look like, where you start to see, as the queries build up in one specific area, you would see the color change. So it would become, if you see red, you know you've got issue, and then the senior administration team can drill down. Conversely, too, so this dashboard is great for members of council, for the senior team to basically look and see, how are we doing? So how are we doing right now in terms of meeting the service levels, the customer satisfaction from the residents on the work that we're doing? So the reason I'm here is to talk to you about what's called the beta program. I'm not sure, is anybody familiar with what a beta program would be? So what we've done is, our software is basically ready to go. So in the last two years, we have developed the software. We now need municipalities to participate with us so that we can launch this, launch the software. What it means for the municipalities that participate, and we really are hoping that, you know, this has been a homegrown solution, and we're hoping to bring it to Leeds and Grenville. But what happens in a beta program is all the costs associated with the implementation, there are no costs for the municipality. So all of the coordination, the installation, that you normally would pay to put a program like this in place, those don't exist in a beta program. And then ultimately, we've, we're working on the final pricing structure, but our goal is that anybody who participates in the beta program would have a very extensive discount for a period of time. So the municipalities that participate would have a significant discount. The other thing, too, with a group, that would be the beta, and we are talking with other municipalities, is that, you know, ultimately, you would benefit from the new features. So as new features come onboard, and as a charter, as a charter member of our application, you could guide where this application would go in the future. I know we've already spoken with Deb, and we are looking, you know, really working hard to integrate a complete financial model that goes, the financial and budgeting module, as well as a full asset management module that ties into the trending. And that's the big key, is sort of, you know, moving forward. So our goal next is, we are going to work with your senior team to try and put together a proposal that we can then bring back to you, and ideally, secure a letter of commitment for us to use, to work with you in partnership with Edwards were Cardinal. The, just a couple of asides, I think, we're very confident that, you know, as an Eastern Ontario solution, this is, our company's going to bring many jobs to Eastern Ontario. We presented to somebody through one of the Launch Labs, and he used the word Shopify when he talked about the potential of this application. So that makes me very excited when I hear potential funders and investors using that particular word. For us, for us, I think we're just proud that this is a very, very good solution, and we want to get it out. So we are working with multiple municipalities. Our goal, my goal, is to actually have, as part of the beta program, all of Leeds and Grenville, including the county involved. And so I have been, I've been talking to Andy a little bit as well, and so we hope that our beta program would actually consist of the entire county. Couple of other sides, just sort of valuable information. We have been accepted as part of the Queen's University Innovation Park, which is also very exciting for us. As a startup software company, they are very integral in new technology, and they've already played a huge part in the development of our company. We're very active, too, with the community development corporations. Tom Russell's been a good ally as well so far, and we're, we think that we may be able to leverage some monies for the municipalities through Community Development Corporation as well. So that's something that we're working on. And finally, we've been accepted into Launch Labs. So Launch Labs is also part of Innovation Park, but it is a central hub for software development, but new company development in Eastern Ontario. And again, for us, that's very exciting as we move forward. So open the floor for questions, if we have time, Mr. Chair.
Yes, any questions? Mr. Chair?
I have several, by me. Through the chair. So first of all, is there anybody that's got anything similar to this already operating?
Yeah, what, the way, what's happened, and AMO went to, as you're aware, AMO went to like an RFI, like a request for interest. And then what happened is, there were some proposals submitted, but what they were doing is they were customizing existing tools. So there's many CRM tools, there's many ticketing tools, but instead of a dedicated solution for municipalities, what you get is sort of a, you know, a somewhat customized solution based on a platform for something else. So while there are some consulting companies that are trying to do the same thing, their front-end costs are very expensive because they have to customize for each and every, each and every municipality. Whereas this is designed from the ground up to basically fit into any municipality right out of the gate.
Second question through the chair. So do the elected officials have access to it? Can we see it? Do we, can we see it online?
Yeah, I think, I think, what I can do, too, so...
The way it's designed?
Yeah, the way it's designed is, yeah, you would have access to like a dashboard that you can see, you could submit your own queries as well. So it's, the idea is that it's open to everybody to submit information in. There's an administration component where the senior team works in the background, but elected officials could have access to the dashboard to see exactly how things are going.
And then final question. I don't know what the period of the beta program is, but at the end of the beta program, do you have any kind of idea of what the annual operating or franchising or leasing costs will be?
Well, we're trying, we're trying to finalize, yes or no? I do, we have some pricing in mind. We know that, sort of roughly, that this will save each municipality, even the smaller municipalities, between half and a full FTE in terms of like across the entire, you know, the entire organization. So we're trying to come up with a pricing structure, though, that reflects the smaller municipalities, the medium, and so it's still preliminary, but I will share that, you will have that in our proposal that will give you exactly the breakdown. My goal, though, is, I think, for the beta, that it would be, it would be a significantly reduced price probably for the lifetime that you own the application for being part of the beta.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, sure. So first, I want to say thank you for coming. Excellent, looks like an excellent product. I like the expandability of the product, or the possibility of the expandability into capital, and that sort of, it looks, excellent, looks like the future. Couple of questions, though, from my perspective, and here, things run, you know, fairly tight. Everything runs directly through CAO, and CAO then distributes everything else out from there. So how does this fit into that sort of a structure?
So typically, what we would do, and Deb and I sort of had a little, some discussions, because, so you've already done extensive process mapping. So typically, what we would do as part of the beta deployment for those that haven't done process mapping, is we would actually go into your organization and do that entire process mapping. And then the tool, the initial, the initial, before the AI kicks in and does its learning, the initial deployment has, you know, point A to point B. So this type of inquiry goes to Bill. This type of inquiry goes to Sue. You know, we would do the full mapping right out of the gate. So, because typically, I would say, I don't want to put a number in here, but 75 to 80% of the work doesn't need to go through that many hands to get to the person doing the work, right? So the idea is that you would do, we would do a full process map or integrate your existing one, which you have, and then the tool right out of the gate, we know that that query's going to the right person right from day one. So there is a significant amount of work that you don't need to put through multiple hands. But conversely, so, conversely, too, though, so if you do have, let's say, something that needs to go to the next level, so this is that whole internal team thing, too. So the same service levels exist internally as that they exist with the residents. So let's say it's something that, it's a, it looked like it was simple, it was a simple fix of a curve, but now it requires a locate. Now it requires, you know, two or three other things to get to the end result. Well, now they've passed it on to somebody else internally. They're under the same clock now, but all that communication about, you know what, sorry, we've determined it needs a locate, the resident knows every step of the way what's going on, and then the service levels kick off internally. So you can, you still have the same path if you choose to sort of deviate because you need something else, but then the intelligence will learn that in the future. And that would be, that would be really great with the app.
So we would know, and staff would continue to know as that updated itself, and they would come in and they would look at their dashboard or whatever, and it would show them what was escalating, like the next day if it wasn't being taken care of that day.
A hundred percent, yeah, yeah. And we could, we could deploy push technology as well, too, so that for the supervisors who have it.
It'll be as quick as I can.
They could get the information.
Timeline for the beta?
We're looking at this fall.
And how long do you expect to do the testing?
Well, I think for the, you'd probably be one of the first betas. I think we'd be looking at three to four months.
Okay. And will it require any significant computer upgrades on our work?
No, so the solution is 100% cloud-based, and so there is no requirement on your end for, other than, we'd have to make sure, obviously, that each, you know, the computers are secure that are using the application, but ultimately, everybody, anybody with a smartphone will have access to the application at different...
Restoring nothing, it's all...
Correct, it's all done on cloud.
Cool, awesome. Thank you again for your...
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions, Mr. Councilor?
Just one. All your queries are getting passed straight, straight through to the management of the various departments. Where is the control taking place here for the financing of this? There's good queries that are going to be asked to be repaired, that's going to go to management, but council hasn't approved the expenditure.
Yeah, correct, absolutely.
So where's the, where's the checks and balance here for the financing?
Yeah, and I think, I think it's like 100%, and that's, I think, what that example where I said, where if you have something that is determined, that's either, let's say it's a capital project for next year, you know, so yeah, okay, it's an issue, the answer is, this will be done next year, and then, you know, or conversely, if you get, say, let's say you get a dozen, because in the past, you might have just gotten through emails here, and then all of a sudden, you've got 15 or 16. Now it's an opportunity for you to maybe reprioritize your capital works project list and say, wow, okay, this maybe is a bigger priority than we thought. So ultimately, the control still rests with those who get the query, and the decision-making ultimately still lies with you, especially for those bigger projects.
Okay, hearing, hearing no other questions. Mr. Batista, thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm sure we'll look forward to your proposal letter when it...
Sounds great. Thank you again.
Thank you. Now, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you care to, if you care to have nothing to do tonight.
Mine won't be nearly as exciting. Very odd. I wonderfully...
Joel, it's better than dinner and a movie.
I remember my meetings, they were always exciting.
Okay, our next, our next delegation is Bill Holtzman for the Request for Road Closure, and also be aware that this comes up in our first action item, 7A, as well.
Right. Okay. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, my name is Bill Holtzman. I'm a planning consultant, and I represent the Dobby family. I'm, it's my first time here in front of you, the committee, and I'm pleased to be here. Not knowing the format, I'm more than happy to stand back, wait for my edit to rise. If staff give a brief presentation, I can just augment it with a couple of comments. I don't have a long presentation.
Madam CAO, would that be sufficient?
Certainly, yeah.
Good, good. We'll go on that tack, Mr. Holtzman, thank you.
Okay.
Good. Okay, moving on to action items and information items, 7A, which is exactly what we just spoke about. So I will let our CAO speak to this, if you would, and there also is a recommendation attached as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a request for road closure and conveyance. It seems a bit complex because there are many parcels, and it's spread across an old plan of subdivision from, I don't even know when, but plans of subdivision are given up numerically, so number 15 in the province of Ontario is probably pretty old.
Yeah.
There is an existing road allowance, unopened road allowance, that between two houses in Ventnor, and the request is to close and convey that road allowance to the neighboring adjoining properties. It's currently used as a driveway. Staff sees no potential for opening that road allowance for any reason. It's, it's stopped roughly 40 feet wide by 132 feet long. So our recommendation, as Counselor Cameron has noted, there is a recommendation, and we do recommend closing and conveying. However, in researching the properties, we discovered that one of the homes in Ventnor, the septic system associated with that home is actually on a separate lot within Plan 15, and potentially could be conveyed to another owner, and in fact, actually is owned by two different people right now, but it's within the same family. So we think this is a good opportunity to clean that up and make sure that for future purposes, the house and septic system are under the same ownership.
Are there any questions? I'm hearing none. We hear of the recommendation. We hear of the recommendation, that committee recommends that council agree to close that portion of Catherine Street between lots seven and eight, Plan Fifteen and convey it to the owners of number fifteen thirty and number fifteen twenty-six Ventnor Road. This closure and conveyance is conditional on, one, the ownership of lots five, six, and seven being vested in the same name. And number two, adoption of a deeming bylaw by the township of Edwardspur Cardinal to merge the parcels with Plan Fifteen. You've had a chance to, to go over the, the information. I'll ask one more time, is there any questions? Counselor Hunter? And Mr. Holzman, would you like to convey anything on that?
Sure, thank you very much for the opportunity. So we, we reviewed the, well, we pre-consumed with staff. We reviewed the report, we agree completely with it. There are some benefits as well in the municipality, as Deb mentioned. There's a couple of parcels that would, we've, we've offered to, or my clients offered to merge them together. Therefore, again, the house and the sewage become, end up on the same property, which actually moves more closer to compliance in terms of minimum lot area. They're undersized right now, so that's a benefit. Second, again, this piece of property being in the, in the municipality's name, there is potentially some, some opportunity of some liability. This would then be vested in the owners on both sides and you'd have nothing to do with it. They currently use it, of course. The third thing is that, I guess over time, there's been some encroachments in there. Not that you're policing that, but again, this would clean up those encroachments as well. So we think it's a best benefit to just do what the recommendation says. My clients will end up owning the property, they'll continue to use it and it'll just clean up that north side of, well, I guess it was called Herald Street at one time. Now it's called Ventnor.
Good, thank you.
We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holzman, question?
So through the chair, so if we do this, then, then what is shown on my map as Catherine Street becomes part of the lot, the other two lots, is that correct?
That, that's correct, yes.
So that's a new survey?
That's correct.
Your clients are responsible for the survey costs and all of, on all of the transfer documents?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then my question is, in the future, assuming changes of ownership, how does the new owner of the metal clad barn get to the metal clad barn?
In my, in my letter to the, to the staff, and it's attached, I'm not sure it's in color, but actually there is a series of lots with different ownerships. But the metal clad barn is also, also owned by the same group that owned the receiving piece of fifteen twenty-six, the east side of Catherine Street. So again, the new lot line would run down the middle of Catherine Street road allowance. We've asked that there be a right of way in favor of both sides. But again, access to those barns would be over Catherine Street, which would be partly owned by the same owner.
Today?
That's correct, yes.
Same owner today? I'm, I'm envisaging a, a, a time in the future where, are you saying that the owner of lot eight is at present the owner of the metal clad barn?
Uh, yes.
But that doesn't necessarily have to continue because there are two separate pieces of property?
That's correct, but if, if there is, as we've asked for, a right of way granted in favor of either half, then access, at, at, well, let me, let me rephrase that. Maybe you asked the question again.
Okay, so right now, lot eight is owned by Mr. C.
Yes.
And in the future, and right now also the metal clad barn is owned by Mr. C.
And, and, and the, the entire farm to the north of that as well, yes?
I understand that. Okay, so now, all, due to some changes in time, now the metal clad barn is owned by Mr. Z. And lot eight is owned by Mr. X. Now how does Mr. Z get to this metal clad barn?
Well, lot eight is owned by the company, the company you mentioned, lot nine as well. So that's the frontage for the entire piece to the, to the north. So they, so they can certainly come through. So the frontage of the metal clad barn is not, is not just on lot eight, it's also lot nine to the east of that. Not sure what, through the chair to the, to the member in his worship, I'm not sure which drawing, but there's a series of lots along north side of Ventnor. So lot, there is a lot to the east of eight which is nine. That's also, that's part of the metal clad barn, barn's holdings. So that's how they could get there. If in the event that the piece of land that is acquiring half the road allowance says, hey, get off my, you know, you can't pass by my property or you can't use Catherine Street road allowance to get to the property.
See, on my map, I, I'm, and I've got the color map here in front of me.
Right.
What I'm seeing is that, is that the metal clad barn is on a separate, a separate piece of property, separate from eight and nine. That's what I'm seeing on the map I got in front of me.
Then it's currently landlocked.
Well, it's at the end of Catherine Street.
But it's not an open public road. It's an unopened road allowance.
But it's being used.
Right, but legally it doesn't have frontage on an open public road.
No, I understand that.
Right, right. So I'm not sure that it's, it's any different today than what-
Okay, so are you saying that, that the metal clad, the piece of property that's, that has the metal clad barn on it?
Yes.
That that can never be sold?
Well, it is, through our research, and this will surprise the Dobi family, that that triangular piece is actually a separate parcel than the large farm behind.
Yeah.
Their intention is to have those merge. In fact, when we were first retained, they said, we'd like to sever that triangular piece away from the piece that fronts on, on Ventnor. And we did our research, said, no, it's a separate parcel already. That triangle is a separate parcel.
Yep, that's what I-
So they can simply merge that with their large farm.
But is that part of the proposal, that that's going to merge?
Well, it's not been set out as a condition. Perhaps that is set out as a condition and maybe that was, you know, results or, or fixes the predicament that you've raised today.
Well, one of the, one of the conditions is the septic field, five, lot five.
Yeah, that's the blue.
One of the conditions is that five, six, and seven be merged to accommodate that septic field, right?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay, which is a common sense solution to that problem. I don't understand if we're going to make that a condition, that, that those three be merged, why we wouldn't also make it a condition that the triangle be merged?
With the back piece?
Yeah.
I agree completely. And that's, as I said, the intention first off was to hire our firm to process the consent to sever the triangle away from the yellow piece, but it's already separate. So they said, good, the lawyers can merge that today. But add it as a condition for sure, I, I completely agree with that.
Okay, because it's not addressed in briefing note or the recommendation?
No, you're, you're, through the chair, you're correct.
Any other questions?
No, that's my question.
Counselor, do you have any question?
Nope.
Just one. Is there one septic field for both addresses?
No.
So there's, there is two septic fields?
The two addresses, excuse me, through the chair, the two addresses being the fifteen thirty and the fifteen twenty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, no, the fifteen thirty, its septic is in the blue to the west and that would all be merged along with half of that road allowance to make one large parcel of the house and the sewage.
Right.
And then fifteen thirty and the other, fifteen twenty-six, the other side has its sewage on that side of Catherine Street. It has nothing to do with-
It's not using fifteen thirty, so-
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
So then through the chairs, so I'm, through the chair to the CAO. So I'm giving the comfort that they don't have any problem provided the triangle is merged with the back half. I mean, it's not included in the recommendation. How do we accommodate that or deal with it? Or is, are you, are you as staff prepared to just monitor and ensure that that happens?
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, the, the initial request actually was to sever that triangle and attach it to the farm. So I guess my assumption was that, that that was going to go forward no matter what we did with the rest of it. So, but you're right, we should probably state that as, as a condition that the metal triangle portion, for lack of a better description, be attached to the rest of the farm.
Okay, how would we, how would we verbalize that in the recommendation?
Just like that.
Through the chair, if I could suggest, it is a separate PIN. The PIN is noted there, it's, you know, that nine, it's like number, it's there. So you could say parcel described as PIN, or lands at oh oh five seven one. Be added to PIN, whatever the large pieces I can see.
Oh three two seven?
I believe that's, yes, oh three two seven, yes.
Okay, so provided that that condition is added to the recommendation, then I'm prepared to support the recommendation.
Do we need a new recommendation?
No, no, just, no. Just a, a, a third bullet point to the recommendation, right?
Yep.
And that PIN be merged with PIN A, be merged with PIN B.
Okay, the recommendation follows. So I'm all with it. And Counselor Hunter will, will second. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question just procedurally?
Go ahead.
So does this recommendation rise to full council for adoption and then, then the process?
It will rise next Monday night.
Okay, great, that's good. Okay, thank you very much for your time and the audience.
Thank you. And again, I'll extend the invitation for you to stay as well. However, if you have other things to do, we can totally understand.
I picked my wife up at the golf course, she's just about finished. Okay, thank you, good evening.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to information item number seven B, which is the second quarter fire report. And Chief Moore will be, will be speaking to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just highlight a few, a few items as we go through here. Fifty-three calls for Q two, fire losses. We had lots of fires, but I would say they were not significant in nature. The excavator owner might disagree, but luckily no, no major structural fires. Changes and updates, we had seven new recruits complete the recruit training program, participated in the regular, regular slated meetings that we do monthly. Training, we held twelve regular training sessions, completed two hundred and twenty-seven online. Hosted an NFPA hazmat awareness and core operations course at Station One. So we had eighteen firefighters from Edwardspur Cardinal and five additional from, from other departments that, that joined us. The two captains attended the three-day crude oil by rail firefighting session in Colorado. And we spent a day with thirteen firefighters at the Avengers Training Center doing some, some line fire training. Fire prevention activity, we participated with Prescott in Augusta and South Grenville. They have a semi-annual event interacting with the grade seven and eight students and attended the water festival with, with a stop there for all the children that participate. Activity, we were preparing the rescue truck RFP. We hosted our annual appreciation dinner, the barrel races, and attended the one hundred and seventh annual firefighter games at South Mountain. On page three, something new, this is just a quick snapshot of the burn permit activity for the quarter. So we, we just created four hundred and four permits in the second quarter. And we had six hundred and twenty-five burns registered. And the, the map shows the general area where, where the burns that were registered were located in. And page four, I provided just a brief personnel update and our, our current roster. So we did receive the recognition of two firefighters unable to maintain regular attendance. And we're currently a level of forty-eight firefighters.
Questions, Counselor?
Your two captains that attend the extended training for the rail cars, without one captain from each department or?
They were both actually, through the chair, they were, they were both from Station Two.
They're both from Station Two? Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So through the chair, I'm going back to the, the crude by rail firefighting session in Colorado. When those captains came back, I'd just be interested if you could give us just a, a brief summary of their assessment of the course, especially along the lines of, do we have the necessary equipment and training to deal with such an occurrence in our township someplace along county road, or CNR line?
Through the chair, I think the first day was primarily classroom. So it was basically hazmat on steroids is the way they described it. So they talked about all the different dangers and all the different, different chemicals and then the way they interact together. The second and third day, I believe, were all fire ground operations. So they have, it's, it's quite an, an interesting training area. They've actually got a, a rail disaster, it's in the middle of the desert. And, and they use all kinds of fuel and they light fires and actually make them, make them put out fires. They thought, they thought it was very, very good, it really opened their eyes. As far as your second, your second question, I don't believe there's probably any, any fire department in Ontario that is prepared to do with that on their own. The, the idea is to know where the resale, resources are to call and what to do in the meantime until they get there.
So this requires specialized equipment to deal with a fire crude, crude by, crude in, crude in a, in a tanker requires special, a fire resulting from an explosion in a tanker requires specialized equipment?
Through the chair, I believe it's, I believe we have equipment. It's the, it's the size and the volume of equipment you would need depending on, on the size of the incident? Small spill, small fire, we could, we could handle that internally. You have a rail disaster, there are going to be calling resources from, from all of the problems.
Okay. Yes? So second set of questions pertaining to page three of four. I didn't understand the significance of the colors. Is it just the numbers? For example, the red circle seems to have a hundred and four. So there was a hundred and four fires within that rough geographic area? And then the blue is lesser and the yellow is sort of in between? Volume wise, is that the significance of the colors?
Through the chair, that, that is correct.
Okay, understand that.
Any other questions?
Just a comment if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
So first of all, I appreciated seeing, I kind of thought that the colors related to volumes. I kind of appreciated seeing that map. I'm kind of blown away by four hundred and four burn permits created and six hundred and twenty-five registered burns. That's quite a significant number of burns in the, in the whole township. And the last thing I wanted to sort of note was the bottom of page two and four, two of four, which is basically congratulations to the showing of four trophies and finished fourth overall in South Mountain. I felt bad and I couldn't get down to South Mountain that day. But I understand, I think Counselor Dillabaw was trying to make it there. So just extend our thank you and best wishes to the chaps that participated. Go ahead, you can say the same thing.
No, it's okay, you said it, you said it already.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just one more comment on the, the crude oil. We're, we're actually, Deputy Chief Davy is organizing some training for us. They have a small burn area on site at Invisa. So this fall, we hope to have each station get to Invisa and relay some of those, some of those teachings, their learnings that they had in Colorado on a smaller scale to the rest of the department.
Wonderful, good. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I?
Certainly.
Thank you. Fire chief, how many in Station One do we have for daytime fires? Daytime, for fires in the daytime? One and two, actually?
Through, through the chair, that, that would be by the day, by the day of the week, by, by the, by the-
Through the week, Monday, Monday to Friday?
It would be, it would be fair to say that we are, we are strapped for people during the day.
On both stations?
Yes.
Can you give me a rough idea, four, five, six, half dozen?
I, I would guess on an initial call, probably half a dozen at each station.
And congratulations again on the field day.
Thanks.
That's a funny question, on the field day, you brought home four trophies, it was kind of, Invernessburg was notorious for years, and the chief always winning, but chief's race, did we win a championship this year?
Through the chair, the chief hasn't had much success in the past, this chief hasn't had much success. And I didn't have any success, and I didn't have any help from my crew, they, they zip tied the inside of my sleeves together on my coat. I really thought this was my year, but I just didn't know.
I kind of heard a rumor you're thrown into some trouble.
Now, was one of those trophies good-hearted nature from the chief? Good, thank you, thank, thank you so much. We'll move on to information item seven C, which is the second quarter facilities maintenance report update, and Mr. Spencer, can you highlight this for us?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. List of items were done in the second quarter, which is April, May, and June, I'll just highlight a couple. The South Center just talking about the PNG day, cleanup day, I know Counselor Dillabaw was there for a number of hours on that day, giving his support, and I believe Counselor Hunter also made it around to both locations, so thank you for that. The new pump and was installed at the Cardinal pool. One thing I didn't put in the report, but I will mention, is a special thanks to the fire department for helping fill the Johnstown pool. They use that as training exercise, and so I'm not sure what the final count was, but I know there was a, a large quantity of trips made to, to fill that pool, which basically saves us a lot of time at the, the Johnstown pool. New steps in railing are installed, health department inspected both pools on the night of June, and they were vote open. Ingredient Center just indicating that the syncope was in on the twenty-seventh to shut down the system. Couple of minor reports were issued from inspections. Special rainout preparation continues for the installation of the new chiller, which will be sometime in the next month. And then under parks, it's just a small list of some of the items that we are working on, on a weekly basis throughout the summer. So I will take any questions, if there are any?
Just a comment, lots of, lots of comments about the stuffs at the Cardinal pool, thank you.
Through the chair, have you had a look at the erosion on Legion Way near the Conestoga site?
Through, sorry.
Is that included as part of parks?
It's more of a road issue.
Shall I leave it at that?
Through the chair, we, we have inspected that, and there will be some work that, that is required.
Okay, and so the next one is, when's, when are the docks going in?
We don't have a confirmation, through the chair, we don't have a confirmed date right now. Water levels are starting to decline, but as of, I didn't check today, but as of Friday, when I went by the boat launch, there were still a section of the dock was underwater, so, again, I wasn't there over the weekend or today, so I'm not sure.
The, through the chair, the canteen area?
Yes.
They're all floaters?
That's correct.
Does anybody plan to get them in?
Well, that's, the, where the two pylons are is where the new dock is going to go, and South Nation will be putting that in when they feel it's safe to put it in.
And, and has there been any, through the chair, again, sorry, has there been any discussion or any updating with them so that we have an answer for?
Yes, I was speaking with South Nation two weeks ago, and we are planning, Mike from South Nation is planning to be on site someday this week or the first of next week?
In, in reference to, to the docks at the canteen, not the boat launch area, I understand the issues with those. If high waters maintain, like continually year after year become an issue, are there changes that can be made to the existing ones that are, are sitting on the ground or the new one that's going to be installed so that they can actually get in the water sooner?
Through you to the chair, yes, that's one of the conversations I'll be having with Mike from South Nation. The gentleman that they have hired to construct the dock that is being installed also has some, some knowledge about potentially upgrading the docks that we currently have to be able to put them in, and they'll be able to float better, so we will be looking at that. So your answer is, the answer is yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Chair?
I, I just want to pick up where Deputy Mayor Taylor, or, oh my God, here we are six months in, I'm still using, my apologies, still using the wrong name, Deputy Mayor Deschamp. I just want to pick up through the chair if I may on the, on the question of the, the docks at the boat launch ramp. I realize that the fixed portions of that dock that are, are underwater right now, but I'm getting a lot of people asking me, when are you going to get your docks in, when are you going to get your docks in, and if I respond, well, the fixed portions are still underwater, they say yes, but the other portions are going to float, and if we have to walk through water to get to them, we will, but we're still wanting to be putting our boats in. And the reason I'm asking the question is because I'm not so sure we're going to see low water this year. And I would like to think that we've got a, a plan whereby we're going to be able to accommodate the high waters that we're seeing and not just wait the entire summer of, waiting for low water. So I, I come back to the question, is there a way of getting the boat launch ramp docks, the floating boat launch ramp docks in the water, you know, in the near future, by that I mean within the next two weeks before the end of July?
Through you to the mayor? That's a good question. I was hoping that after meeting with South Nation that they may have some insight as to what we can do, if there's any sort of reinforcements that we can do to our existing docks when we put them in, but to do that, there's going to be potentially extra cost, extra cost that I did not have budgeted. And I don't know, I'm not saying that it could be a large cost, but, but I don't know. But if there is extra cost to get them, to be able to put them in so that they are safe for the public to use and not walking through water, that would be up to council to make that decision whether or not they want to spend that money to do that.
Well, excuse me, through the chair, I mean, there's an implication there that walking through water is not safe, but, I mean, my neighbor's doing it, and I think all, on all of the chaps that have dockage at Bridgeview Marina are doing it too.
Well, through you to the chair, if, if council wants to give the authorization to put them in, that people walk through water, then that will, then, that will be your choice.
Just, I'd feel better they're walking through water than on water, but, I mean, I, I just think that, I just think that the, the boat users are looking for, they're looking for those docks, I guess that's the fast way of putting it.
If, if, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, as well, the fixed docks that are there, and some of, some of them are underwater or partially underwater, if we put the floating dock in, we're going to have a level situation where one dock is going to be higher than the other, which could cause a turbulence problem or a slippage problem or some kind of problem like that. I, personally, I, I see these docks every day, I walk down there every day, pretty much, and I'm, as of, as of this morning, I have to agree with Mr. Spencer that I don't think that it's safe to put those in today. In, at the end of the week, maybe a different story, but I do know that staff is monitoring those docks every day. Okay, well, just, I'd like to go to Counselor Dillabaw, he has, is waiting patiently.
I just, I was getting some complaints when I was down there in July, one is, we need more wake, no wake signs down there, especially at the point coming in further down. We need about three no wake signs if we can. And they are flying through there, I was there in July, a couple of, uh, boats were going quite, quite fast and causing, and good wakes. There's an old, there's, well, I don't know, I can't see it.
There's two old ones, there's two old ones which are pretty weather beaten.
Ooh, I guess so.
Pretty badly, one is not up, there, there's one by, by the dock laying on the ground, or, well, it's not laying on the ground, it's propped against the docks, but it's, it's really unreadable. Not being that it's, it's worn, it's readable if it was up.
Anything else, Counselor? Uh, just, I'd like to...
I don't want, I'm going to go on a different route, so if else.
So I, I was just going to make the point that people are using the, the launch ramp as it is.
Yes.
So they're using the wa, the portion that's underwater.
Yes.
They're using it now.
Yes, they are.
So, I mean, there's not going to be any worse if the floating docks are there.
Well, it's, it's just, it's just, you're going to be a little higher, that's all. But you're, you're right, they, they are using it now.
Everybody good with the docks?
I think we're good with the docks.
I pass. I yield.
I, I just want to go back to the pool, pool stairs, if I may, through the chair. The, the stairs are great and wonderful, I'm just wondering if Carefree made any recommendations to you in regard to, you know, the small area below the coping stones? You know, there's, there's, you know, quite a bit of concrete, you know, missing in some of the areas, and, and you know, some of the tiles are a little loose around, especially like right above the stairs, actually. Did they make any recommendations, or did they offer any, you know?
They didn't make any recommendations, we did, there were some areas this year that we did patch up, and there is more work to be done, so we are aware of it, but it's time sensitive to be able to do that sort of stuff, and some of that got moved when they put the stairs in.
Okay, hearing no other questions, no requests, we're going to move on from that information item to information item number seven B, second quarter facilities stats report, and I believe, Mr. Spencer, you are going to highlight some of this as well.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, the report is for the months of April, May, and June. Excuse me, just noting that the ice was in just for the month of April and May. Minor ball, just indicating the Johnstown program is running well this year with five teams, Mike Lindberg has done an excellent job again this year. There is no minor ball being played in Cardinal this year. The second page just breaks down the facilities that we have for April, May, and June, with the available hours, booked hours, and then the percentage, and then it shows the two eighteen percentage. Page three shows the ice rentals for the two months with the same headings, and then below that is the quarter to quarter comparison for the three months based on two nineteen compared to two eighteen, and at all facilities are, we did see a small increase in the percentage. Down below that, we have the diamond usage for our facilities indicating the minor ball and the adult rec league that's playing here on Wednesday nights. There's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
Through the chair, so, so no minor ball in Cardinal whatsoever, there's no?
Nothing at all.
Usage update at all for either of the Cardinal ball fields?
No.
So other than, you know, me and some friends going there, there's no actual reserve usage of, of either one of those ball fields?
That is correct. I, I, I'd just like to follow up on that is, and Mike, Mike, you may not be able to answer this, but what's the reason? What, what's happened here? Cardinal always used to be a vibrant ball community, and what's, just, do you have any idea what's happened?
Just a, a low turnout of, of registration and some kids leaving Cardinal and going to Johnstown to play in, in the Johnstown program.
I see, okay.
And again, Cardinal used to run good programs, Roxanne Riddell and a couple of her volunteers, it's not that they didn't, they haven't tried, but, and this year in the Augusta Minor Ball League, there's very few Bantam and Midget teams at any level, uh, through any of the associations, if you go onto their website, I think there's only four Bantam Boys and I think four Bantam Girls, or before you'd have five or six of those at, at all levels, so it's the Bantam and the Midgets that are starting to fall out, and for the last two or three years, that's what was played in Cardinal, was the Bantam Boys and the, and the Midget Girls that Roxanne coached, so those levels aren't there anymore, the kids have moved on.
Good, okay, thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Hunter?
I noticed on your usage, Mike, you have in Johnstown, the ball being played on the back diamond, they're having it out there quite a few nights, I've never seen anybody playing on that back diamond, what diamond do they play on?
I don't have their actual schedule with me, but I, I do know staff have dragged them and they do whatever, so I'm not sure, and I know they're even, Mike's using the diamond out here on Wednesday night this week to make up for, make up for a rainout game, so I'm not sure.
And, through, in regards to the teams playing there being involved, uh, Mr. Spencer used to have very active minor ball too, that's why the back diamond was built when we were around there, but I think it's mainly the soccer, I think it's taken over from the ball, the even family team, they're, they're a mixed team now, they used to be girls and boys, separate teams, and now the girls and boys are playing, it's mixed, I don't think there is a straight boys and straight girls team left, and they're going as far as that league now, they used to be just a close league, now they're going clean to port, running westport to get enough teams to play, so.
And it's a short season too, basically it started around the May two-four weekend, maybe the week before, and for the most of the ball, it ends this weekend, maybe next weekend, but I know Johnstown has a big tournament on Saturday this week, and I think ball's done after that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm not... I knew you were going to ask this.
I don't know whether to proceed or not, with your forbearance, sir.
Don't let the saga...
Sorry, I was trying to stifle a yawn, if you really want to go.
I didn't want to bore you.
You never do.
So through the chair if I may, so with no ball being played in Cardinal, or, we're not doing any, any, like, weekly maintenance on that, on that field, are we?
Every, oh, absolutely.
In Cardinal?
Yeah, we drag it once a week.
Even though there's nobody playing on it?
Yeah, because if you don't, if, if you let it roll, then it'll hurt, we cut the grass, we do underneath, the bleachers are moved every two weeks, and the grass is cut underneath all the bleachers, everything.
Oh, so we're still maintaining it?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
Fair enough, that's, that's good to know, I'm glad to know that, thanks.
Okay, diamond, are you just the front diamond or both diamonds you're making?
The front one's all grass.
I consider Cardinal just to have one diamond. To be honest with you, I mean, the second one is all grass, and I mean, I'd like to take that fencing down, but I know there was conversation at our last council, previous council, to leave it up, so, but to me, that's not a second ball diamond.
Is it big enough for a soccer field or pitch?
I'm not sure what the actual dimensions are of the soccer pitch, so...
I'd just be curious if there...
A small one, yes?
If there was a couple of goalposts in there, perhaps, I don't know. I'll just leave that hanging. Any other questions? Thank you, thank, thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to information item seven E, and it's the second quarter second quarter two thousand and nineteen operations report. And I believe that, uh, our Director of Operations is going to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Typical, uh, second quarter activity for the, for the department. Uh, roadside spraying program completed, uh, mainly in the north end. We had, uh, street sweeper in, in, in the village of Cardinal, Spencerville, Johnstown, and, and Ventnor. We, we completed, uh, sixteen cross culverts installed, uh, most on, on Pittston Road and, uh, five entranceway culverts. Reports has also completed the, uh, the annual crushed rock, um, gravel tender and dust control. And the, the, the crush rock distribution is, is below you in the table. Flip over to section two with waste disposal. That four hundred and fifty-eight vehicles attend the site over thirteen Saturdays. And also within this quarter, we had the, uh, the annual donate to dump. And, uh, provided the summary of, uh, of, of the disposal fees and tonnages received from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. And also had our brush and leaf pickup during this quarter. Section three, environmental services, uh, activities were, were well and, uh, um, all results were, were well within this, uh, within this quarter. Any questions that you may have?
I'll start at this end, Councilor Hunter?
Uh, one, uh, sample that we had come back bad at, uh, gesture apart. Okay, was that just a, a dummy example taken or?
That is coming up, uh, later on in the, uh, in the agenda.
So, um, just roughly, I would suspect that all indications are that it's, uh, that it was a false positive.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, just a couple. Um, on page one of five, uh, did our, um, are dust present? Did it, did we call for magnesium chloride as opposed to calcium chloride? And do, are we using magnesium chloride? I just find that strange.
Uh, through, through the chair, we've been, uh, using magnesium chloride probably for the last four to five years.
Because the successful tender this year was daily, was it thought?
Through the chair, that is correct.
And did, and are they not supplying us from the Johnstown terminal?
Uh, I do not believe that that is where it was supplied from.
Oh.
Anything else, or will I move, uh, Councilor Dillabon? No? Has a question? Councilor, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Dooley Care. Uh, Mr. Grant, can you help me out on, uh, page one of five? It says that you did a hundred and thirty lane kilometer graded. How many hours would it take us to do that? Hundred and thirty hours or a hundred and thirty, uh, kilometers?
Well, roughly. Well, roughly, it's about, uh, travel, uh, three kilometers an hour. And there's six pit, six passes. Uh, I, I, I would say you're looking at roughly, um, about two and a half weeks.
Two and a half weeks? Thank you.
Any other, uh, Mr. Mayor?
So on, uh, again, page one of five, the roadside mowing, uh, it's, the, the note is first initial pass is in progress. Generally, at this time of the year, we would have finished the first pass and be on the second pass. Is, uh, is there, well, first of all, how long to finish the first pass and then is there, um, plan to, to proceed with the second pass on, on roadside mowing?
So through, through the chair, we are, we are behind with our roadside mowing because we, we've, uh, have our entire force working on, uh, the, the Pittston Road culverts to ensure they're ready for the, for the resurfacing that will be starting, uh, next week. So we'll, we'll, we'll over the next, probably two, two and a half weeks, finish up that first pass and, uh, hopefully be back on to the, to the second one.
Anything else?
Just a question. Water damage repairs. Is that just repairs that staff pick up or is that, uh, like people call in and say they have a problem?
So through the chair, combination.
So there is a method where people call in and it's logged somewhere?
That is correct.
Thank you.
No more, no other questions? I'll, uh, thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Grant, and I'll move on. And our next, uh, information item seven F, um, this is operations, operational efficiencies within the fire department. Uh, but I believe it's phone, phone savings. And, uh, Mr. Spencer, are you speaking to this?
That should be the chief.
Actually, the chief is doing the first one. I am on the second.
Okay, thank you. It's your, uh.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a quick, uh, a quick, uh, information item regarding, uh, phone and internet at the, at the Cardinal site. So the joint, uh, between the public works and the, the fire department, we had, we each had a full business phone line and then a fax line at, at station two, so, plus the internet for the building. Um, in discussions with the, uh, the, uh, road super, we felt that one shared line between the two because neither side is really staffed on a regular basis. And, uh, but the fax was rarely used anyway at station two, so. So what we're gonna do going forward is we're just going to share, uh, share one line between the two sides and, uh, and go with an internet package, uh, to provide good, good solid lack by internet of the building. And we're gonna save roughly half of what we can.
Good?
Thank you.
Good.
Note, note, record.
Any, any questions from the chief? Hearing, hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Uh, to seven G, uh, which is facilities cost saving measures. And, Mr. Spencer has already indicated he's speaking to this.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Similar to, uh, Chief Moore's comments. Um, the Spencer Arena has always had two phone lines. Uh, the second one was always to house, uh, incoming, uh, readings for Falcon Security. But, uh, I've been able to negotiate with Falcon Security and, and, uh, now they're able to, uh, they've been able to attach their main line to our main line to, uh, get their readings. So we are basically eliminating the second line, which is, was disconnected in June. And we'll save the twelve hundred dollars per year for the second line with, uh, about that.
Good, thank you, uh, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Spencer. It's, uh, savings are always, always appreciated. Good, good job, uh, both, uh, both fire department as well as, uh, the facilities. Thank you. Moving on, our next, uh, information item is seven H, and this is the energy conservation and demand management plan. And, uh, who is speaking to this? Mr. Spencer?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so the township has two, um, obligations based on the Ontario regulations, uh, three ninety-seven dash eleven. Uh, one is that we have to report our energy findings yearly, um, which we do, um, on the specified facilities that are listed in appendix A. Um, so that was, those reports were submitted in June and they are for the two thousand and seventeen, uh, calendar year. The second part of the energy conservation and, uh, demand management plan is that, uh, every five years, we update our plan, um, to basically show that we are taking necessary measurements to, um, watch where, where our energy consumption is and how we are able to potentially reduce energy consumption. So the energy management plan, uh, is in front of you. Um, and, um, I'll just highlight a couple areas. Basically, the purpose is, uh, aims to provide a basis for the township to, uh, implement its improvements, uh, to reduce energy. Um, page two talks about the goals and the objectives that we have. And again, this is a working document. It's a five-year plan, but it's a working document because things change, um, throughout the year. Um, our first five-year plan that we had, uh, put together in two thousand and fourteen, uh, we had hoped to have a, uh, reduction in energy, um, upwards of five percent. And we were able to, to meet that over the five-year plan. So our goal is to, uh, to continue that, uh, for this next five-year term. Incentive fundings on page three just talks that, uh, we are always looking for any type of fundings, um, to, uh, help reduce the energy costs, whether that is replacing a sub pump or replacing a pool pump. Um, anything where, uh, we're able to, uh, conserve energy. Um, and where there's funding available, we will, uh, put the necessary grant applications together to do that. The back three pages, appendix A, as I indicated, is the energy consumption that we reported on. Not every building is, uh, necessary to be recorded. The ones that are listed are the ones that we are recommended to do. Um, I will say that, uh, going forward for the two thousand and nineteen season, we are also going to be rep, uh, on our pool facilities, um, for the three-month of operation. So that will be, it's not a requirement, but it's something that we will start doing based on the fact that we have, uh, a new, uh, pump and filtration system in Johnstown and potentially we'll have that in Cardinal within the next two years. Uh, page six is appendix B, and these were, uh, projects that were completed. Basically shows the, uh, estimated savings in kilowatts and shows the completion date of those projects. And then appendix C are potential projects that we have, uh, listed over the next five years as capital projects that give the estimated cost, the estimated energy savings, and potential target dates. And again, it's a working document and it's all based on, um, budget, uh, approval, uh, from year to year. That's basically it. So the, uh, the.
Open for questions?
Open for questions?
I'll start at the same. Councilor Dillabon?
Uh, well done, Mike. Um, I see with the Spencer Arena and, and, uh, Ingredion with the new light LED, uh, arena lights. But I don't see anything on our refrigeration plant of seeing where we can save or investigate of where we can save. Because I, I'm sure that sixteen thousand dollars a month in Ingredion, seventy-five percent of that is our refrigeration plant. Is there any reason why we haven't got something that where we can look into some kind of savings or investigate how we can reduce our costs on that, on our plant?
Sure. Uh, through, uh, the chair to, uh, Councilor Dillabon. Um, just, uh, a side note on, so a basic, I know you indicated sixteen thousand for the Rena St. Lawrence bill. That's water, uh, and, uh, and sewer and electricity. So the actual electricity bill is not sixteen thousand. It's usually averages around thirteen. But still a substantial amount, don't get me wrong. But it's water and sewer in there. They're not, sorry.
What, fifteen?
I said thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yeah, on average.
Right.
On average. Um, and having the lights on at the Ingredion Center, um, it's a substantial amount of electricity. Yes, the compressor room, I would say, takes up probably sixty percent of the energy cost for the, for the facility. But the arena lights being on all day long is also, uh, a great energy, uh, cost. And so we are looking to, uh, change the lighting fixtures in the Ingredion Center as well. In this rink over here in Spencerville, we're able to put on a row of lights where in the Ingredion Center, we're not able to put on as many. It's, we have to have more lights on because of the walking track during the day. So we are looking, and it's, it's not that we're not.
Oh, no, but have, have you, have you put that in there? Or are you gonna put it in your proposal where we can maybe look at the refrigeration, maybe reducing, you know, reducing the temperature of the ice at night when it's not being used and then bringing it back up?
We actually, we reduce the, uh, ice over the course of the evening, at night when it's cheaper to, to use. So we will drop the ice down to seventeen, um, so then it can go up to potentially twenty twenty-one during the day. So we try to avoid having the compressors run more during the day. We do that at night. So that's our, all those, um, practices are already in place at both facilities.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, any other question?
My question concerns, uh, page five of eight. Appendix A. So there was a benchmark set, as I read the, this chart. It looks to me as though there was a benchmark set in twenty seventeen.
These, if I may, through the chair, these are the figures that were reported for two seventeen. So this is a total calculated energy, uh, usage for these facilities for the, the two thousand and seventeen fiscal year.
So these are actual usages, KW?
Yes.
Kilowatt hour usages?
For the, yes, for each of those buildings.
Okay, so now, here we are in twenty nineteen, so have we analyzed to see where we stood on each of these metrics in twenty eighteen? We don't have twenty nineteen figures yet, but we have twenty eighteen figures. So how did the twenty eighteen figures for kilowatt hours used compare with the twenty seventeen numbers? I mean, we need to be able to demonstrate that we're using less kilowatt hours.
I don't have the figures calculated for two eighteen. I have them, but we, we're not, um, obligated to submit that, um, those findings until July of next year. So these reports that we have to submit to the government are for a two-year period back. So next year for July first, I have to report our findings for the calendar year of two eighteen. So then I could take two eighteen and then we can look at two seventeen and say, I, I, I have two sixteen year, I think two thousand and sixteen year figures, but I don't have two eighteen because we haven't calculated them yet.
Okay, but through the chair, if I may, it would be helpful, if we have those numbers, it would be helpful for us to be able to determine whether in fact the kilowatt hour usage is dropping. I mean, I haven't seen the, I mean, I, I don't recall seeing, and I don't have a report to show me what were the twenty sixteen figures to even compare with the twenty seventeen figures. But if we have the twenty sixteen figures, it would be nice to see them beside the twenty seventeen figures so that we can see, are we achieving what we set out to achieve?
Right.
Could we get the twenty sixteen figures, Mr. Chair? Well, twenty eighteen's will come.
Next year.
Next year.
But we have them now. Just don't have to submit them until next year.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it's not, it's not as simple as just submitting them. There, there's a significant process in order to gather the data and make sure that, um, that all everything is in the kind of accuracy that we need to be in in order to submit. We're happy to provide the twenty sixteen, uh, data. But, uh, Mr. Spencer requires some administrative support in order to get the, uh, data ready for the province, so we, we tend not to do it ahead of time. We wait till we have some students by the second year.
Okay, so, but the twenty sixteen numbers we do have.
Yes.
No questions?
So, so, so just go.
Yes, go ahead.
So now, on, on page seven of eight, we have proposed energy conserva, uh, conservation measures for twenty nineteen, twenty-three. And these, um, the, these proposals are, um, given to us in two metrics. First of all, cost metric, which is dollars, which fluctuates, um, as the rates change. But the more significant one to me is the kilowatt hour savings. So at some point, these are the estimated savings in kilowatt hours. Is it, is that for the entire four-year period? We're gonna save, for example, in Spencerville Arena, we're gonna save nineteen thousand kilowatt hours over the entire four-year period? Is that what this is telling me?
Through the chair to, uh, Mr. Mayor, no, that would be, the kilowatt savings would be per year.
Okay, so that's per year?
That is correct.
Okay, so now I've got a, a metric. Okay, so now I've got a metric I can measure against the chart that I had on five of eight, page five of eight?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. So we just have to start accumulating these, these reports sort of on a side-by-side fashion, so that we can see what our progression is.
That is correct. And as, through the chair, as our CEO indicated, it's very time-consuming. So it's not just figures we can just pull off a piece of paper, it's a lot of administrative, Debbie said, there's a lot of administrative work to calculate, put all the forms together.
But my comment, Mr. Chair, is that apparently, from what you're telling me, is that the province is requiring that we do these.
Well, this is mandatory.
Yeah, so if we do them, so if we're doing them, we might just well be seeing.
Oh, for sure.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Counselor?
I just have one comment on the report for page seven, there it appears like the greatest way we can save money is by putting in LED lights in every building we have, that seems to be going bang for a buck. Best 30,000 in Spencerville Arena and save 19,000 kilowatts where we get down to 100 things, like the replacement of the Rena D metafire, it was 28,000, we only go save 3,000 kilowatt hours there, so. And Cardinal Pool Pump, a hundred thousand dollars, we only save 5,000 kilowatt hours, so. We should be doing all our light pictures, if there's anything else, so.
Yeah, and I, I also studied that, that quite carefully, and it just sort of struck me as strange that at the wastewater, just for example, we're spending, we're going to spend $20,000 to save 20,000 kilowatt hours, so that's, you know, you can figure that out as a dollar, a dollar a kilowatt, but I had, but I had trouble with the water plant at $10,000 to save 5,000. But anyway, that, I, I understand the matrix there because of the floor surface, perhaps the wattage of the lighting as well, so I can, I can certainly understand that. I just did a quick calculation and it appears we're going to spend just excess of $217,500 to save 90,000 kilowatt hours. Thank you. If there's no other questions, Councilor Dillawatt?
I just have, what's your, what's your kilowatt an hour roughly, commercial? Like we're saving, we're saving 20,000 kilowatt an hour, but how much is, is a kilowatt?
Through the chair, I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me, Steve.
Okay, I just like, you know, compare if it's $1.50 or?
It's slightly less from Reno St. Lawrence than it is from higher ones, there's different price structures, so.
But we don't rough, okay.
But also we have to take into consideration your delivery service, your delivery.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But kilowatt hours, I can understand.
And the Ingredion Center, that, that's five years old, right? So there's no, that wasn't LED put in there at that time?
No.
Thank you. That's it.
Now, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll, that was an information item, we'll move on to the next information item, which is seven I, and it's the industrial park water sample result. Counselor Hunter made reference to this earlier. I believe the Director of Operations is speaking to this.
Through the chair, I'll have the operator, George Shaw, speak to this item.
Fine, thank you.
Through the chair, so basically on July 4th, 2019, we're notified at 10:55 approximately by Caducean Labs that there was an adverse test result for Total Colli Farms for a sample taken at Greenfield Ethanol Plant. That basically sets off a series of events that involves a notice of adverse test results and issue of resolution, which is under Schedule 16 of Regulation 17803. So basically, right away, after getting off the phone with the lab, the ministry or, and health unit were notified. The first part is verbal advice that had occurred as soon as possible. We then looked for, basically for some direction from the health unit. In conversation with the health unit, they reviewed a sample result, which was five CFU Total Colli Farm, and basically decided that resample was in order, which we basically had already set off to do. They advised us to resample Greenfield Ethanol Plant, and we also sampled Prismium and New Expert as well. The samples were sent out to Caducean Lab, sent from our own staff, taken to the lab, and the results came back on the 8th. And basically at that point, the health unit was contacted again, the results were discussed, everything came back clean, and there was no further direction from the health unit, so the issue of resolution was, was then issued to the ministry and to the health unit.
Any questions? Mr. Mayor, yes?
So these are all potable water samples from the, from the potable water source, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So do we come to a, do we come to a learning as to how we collected the bad sample?
It's hard to determine. Basically, one of the problems was possibly that is the sample location is the washroom in the, in the guardhouse, so we've requested to move to their kitchen unit to take the sample, to probably alleviate any chance of cross-contamination. There's also a chance that the sample could have been contaminated at the lab itself. It only takes, you know, a touch of a thing on a liquid bottle, it could possibly cause contamination of the sample, so it inadvertently happened. And with the five CFU result and the chlorine residual was .43%, typically CT time for viruses and bacteria are much lower than a different organism, like a surface water type thing, Giardia, Cryptosporidium, that type of thing. Typical CT time may be only four for viruses and bacteria, whereas 30 for a different organism. So at .43, and the, and the health unit was probably assuming the same thing, it's highly unlikely that it was a source thing. Read the resampling right away, and everything came back clean. We resampled at the, at Greenfield, which is at the end of the distribution.
Yeah.
One ahead of them and one at the start of the distribution, so we covered the whole area. They only requested we do Greenfield, but we chose to do the other two as well, and they all came back clean, so.
And those samples were driven to Ottawa?
Correct, by our staff immediately.
Okay, so I guess the comment that I want to make, Mr. Chairman, is to, I mean, this may end up have, have, being a sort of a one-off, but it tells me that the system between the lab and ourselves and ourselves and the response is working the way it's supposed to work.
Correct.
Yeah, so that, that's, we should derive a great deal of comfort from that.
We should, yes. Through the chair, if I might, the, giving the information verbally right away to the health unit, and they provide direction. The direction of what they might give you could be much different from five CFUs that it came back 100. You know, they might have said, start flushing, flush the whole system, you know, that type of thing. If we came back with a small amount, which it would be a much more minor response required from the health unit as compared to something else, or if it was E. coli or something like that, a different bacteria. Total Colli Farms are an indicator, basically that it's possibly not good water. It doesn't say that it is, you know, bad, but in fact, there was only five CFUs.
Determines the response.
Correct.
Counselor?
I just have one, one question, because I know, as you say, it helps you and it can require a lot of different responses depending on whether you got a contaminator, whether you got a, and they do quite often, they request you to flush if any amount. We're getting the water supplied from Prescott, and we're paying for it by the meter or liter, whatever we pay for it by. Health requires us to flush without water and contamination. Do we have to pay for that, or does Prescott have to pay for that because there's supply?
Through the chair, I don't know particularly for sure on that. I would assume that we would have to pay for it, but if they, if it came out that there was a problem there, one of the, it was brought forward, the health unit called Prescott and inquired if they had any upsets at that time, and I also called them, basically to say, did you have a water break or anything that could have possibly put that in, and they said they had to issues. It'd be very hard unless their program, depending on where they sample, to detect where that problem came from. However, if it showed up in our system after they had had a water break and it was a true reading, something that came back, I don't know, 200 colli farms or something, I think that question would be valid. I'm not sure on the total agreement between the township and Prescott, but I don't know if that's ever addressed.
Good, I'll, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Shaw, good report, well done, good job. Now we'll move on to action item seven J, which is the memorandum of understanding with SNC, and there is a recommendation attached to that, and I believe the Director of Operations is going to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, this is a, an agreement between South Nation and the Township. South Nation Conservation has the agreement with the federal government through the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing for the, our 50% funding for this project, so. It's just a matter of clarifying those key responsibilities in the, the process for receiving our, our 50% of the funding to complete the project.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Grant. Before questions, before I ask the questions, I'm just going to read the recommendation. The recommendation is that committee recommends that council authorize a partnership agreement with South Nation Conservation, SNC, to complete flood mitigation measures at the Cardinal Water Treatment Plant through the National Disaster Mitigation Program, NDMP. Any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a mover for the recommendation. Mr. Packwood, a second there?
Second.
By Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll call the question, all in favor, and that's Carrie, thank you. Moving on to action item seven K, which is the cormorant control on OPG lands. There is a recommendation with this. I'll read the recommendation first, and that is that committee recommends that council pass a law to authorize a lease agreement.
License.
I'm sorry, authorize a license agreement with Ontario Power Generation for the purposes of cormorant control on lands owned by OPG. And I believe the Director of Operations will speak to this?
Actually, no.
I, I stand corrected.
The, this is a project that we've undertaken for the last couple of years to try to get some control on the damage that cormorants have been doing both to the land and to the along the St. Lawrence Highway. And in earlier this spring, the mayor and I met with representatives from OPG, we had a, we had a somewhat informal agreement that the trapper could go onto OPG lands, they asked for something a little more structured. They have developed this agreement, it's, it's pretty straightforward, but they felt for their own purposes, for liability, to want that they best have a more formal agreement with the township. So no work has been done on OPG lands in 2019 today.
And I see the, the agreement is quite lengthy, and, wow. Now, I, I just have a quick question regarding the map, the mapping. Is it the areas that I see in red that are in question?
Believe so, yes.
And the, there's several little double Xs. Could I get a description of that, please?
I think Matt, perhaps the mayor would be in better position to answer that than me. I think he's more familiar with this land than I am.
I think those are areas where we've already done some work.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's, that's all the questions I have. Are there any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through the chair, just more of a, of a comment that, just to commend the good work that Mr. Courtney has done in representing the township and in the manner that, that he does cormorant control responsibly. I think it's a great project. I know OPG was a little concerned with stewardship, and this seems to, you know, manage their concerns well, and it gets a good agreement in place, so we can continue Mr. Courtney's good work going forward.
Any other questions? All right, the recommendation has been read, can I have a mover, please? Counselor Dillawatt and second, Deputy Mayor DeShaw. I'll call the question, all in favor?
All right.
Carrie, thank you. Now we move on to the action item seven L. There is a recommendation with this as well, and it's disposal of surplus goods. And before I, before I go any further, I'll read the recommendation, and it is that committee recommends that council declare the above items as surplus to the needs of the township and authorize staff to dispose of the items in the most effective manner. And before I put my foot in my mouth, I'll ask who is going to speak to this?
Director of Operations.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we have two, two of the above vehicles that we mentioned in the action item that are now considered surplus to the needs of the township. We will look at potentially advertising locally through a sealed bid process, probably likely achieve the best value.
Thank you. Questions, if any? Counselor Hunter?
So you're recommending that we just put this out for a local bid on to get rid of them?
That is correct.
In all my experience in the township, every time we did that, we've gotten extra nothing from these trucks when we've seen to get very many bids on them.
Two oh four, you're probably not going to get any.
Especially the usage a township truck gets.
Well.
Go ahead, if you have a question.
Well, I'm picking up on Counselor Hunter's comment, because in the briefing though, on policy implications, policy permits surplus items to be disposed of through public auction, sealed bid, or trade-in. And obviously, we're not trading them, so that leaves public auction or a sealed bid. And I kind of agree with Counselor Hunter, we hardly ever get responses, and I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we don't get a deep enough penetration in the marketplace. You know, we can post it on our website, may or may not get seen, put it in the paper, may or may not get seen, advertise it on the radio, may or may not get heard. And I don't know what is planned on the way of public auctions here with Ritchie Brothers, but my preference would be to see us run it through a public auction with a reserved bid to start with. And if we didn't, couldn't match our reserve bid at the public auction, to, to try it, try it some other way. There is another way that's, we could do it through an auction, and that is that we have two or three active auctioneers in our immediate area, and those folks are conducting auctions on a weekly or monthly basis. And even though they may be conducting an auction at Mr. Smith's farm to dispose of Mr. Smith's equipment, they would happily see one of these vehicles included in that auction with or without a reserved bid. And when you've got 60, 80, 100 people at a public auction with a live auctioneer, sometimes you get a better result than just advertising. advertising it in a paper. So if we're looking for the highest return on our dollar, the greater the exposure to the marketplace, I think the, the greater, the greater the return will be. I'd like to try us either running it through Ritchie's Auctions, or running it through Lyndon Marshall, Jim Cooper, there's Kerry Hens, and there's another one down in Stormont Township, someplace, can't remember his name. He does a lot of auctions in this area, too.
Are we talking vehicles that are practically worth their weight in scrap, though?
No, I don't think so. I'm looking at 236,000 kilometers on a 2004. That's not a lot. I mean, it's heavy, but it's not excessive.
So you're, you're expecting to get...
For 2004, five, six, seven? I don't know if that's reasonable. Five, six, seven, depending on the market. I don't know if there's...
Hundred thousand?
Five thousand? No. Have you tried anything duly checked about Mr. Grant? Like, what, what are they worth? Have you asked somebody? I don't.
If I, if I may, may I?
Sure.
Thank you. Quick search on Kijiji, crack this age, this many miles. I'm really good shape, you're going to get $3,000. These are not in really good shape.
Not worth the effort, five, six, seven. Not worth the effort.
That's more what I'm thinking, just people that are already strapped for, for resources and time, making it more complex just doesn't seem...
Doesn't get us get rid of it.
Move the recommendation, Mr. Chair.
If we're, if we're going to tender, then I know one other vehicle we've got rid of in prior years. We had a, a dealer was going to put a bid on it, but we wouldn't take a Visa card to bid on it at the time. Are we going to accept visas or anything for payment of these?
Treasurer's not here, but as I understand it, we cannot take credit card payment for anything at this point.
Seriously.
We limit our funds, you know, a lot of people bidding on this, we can't...
Take credit card payments for dump tickets?
Online, through PayPal.
Oh, is that what you're talking about?
No, no. We had a dealer before come here at the last minute, and he wanted a tender in a, on another truck.
All over the counter?
All over the counter, and I just had a credit card, let me...
Oh.
Do we not, do we not take credit cards for tax payments?
No, sir.
No, we don't?
No. It, it, it costs money.
It does, yes.
We are not permitted to...
Two and a half percent, three and four.
Yeah, and we're not permitted to add the cost to, to the things we're selling. So we just, at this point, don't take credit cards for any.
Well, well, good to know.
Any other questions? I have a mover and I have a second there. Oh, no, I don't have a second. I need a second there, the Deputy Mayor. And I'll call the question. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Moving on to seven M, action item, Public Works Greater Follow-Up Report. And we do have a recommendation on that, which is recommendation that committee recommends that council maintain two motorized graders in the municipal fleet until at least 85% of the municipal road network is paved. And I believe the Director of Operations is speaking to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the last meeting, we, we had the initial greater report, and it, it appeared that council was looking for a, a more formal recommendation. So this has been prepared with looking at balancing the amount of kilometers of gravel road we have, and getting us to a point either, if, if the direction of council is to move towards reducing down to, to one grader, it gives, it gives a sufficient time to, to pave the additional roads that, that one grader may be able to maintain the network.
Questions for the Director? Mr. Mayor?
So through the chair, if I may. So the way I'm doing the calculations here, we've got about 203 kilometers of road network, according to the briefing note, when I add the, the paved and the, and the gravel. And if we're going to keep two graders until we're 85% pavement, that would be, we would need to be at 173 kilometers paved or surface treated. We only have 138 paved or surface treated, which means that we would have to do another 35 before we could move one grader off the fleet. So my question is, in the last five years, how much have we changed, how much, how many kilometers have we changed from gravel to surface treatment in the last five years, or the last four, or the last three?
Through, through, through the chair, we did one round of surface treat, which was about nine kilometers in length.
That was one round of surface treating?
Correct.
And Hyman was already, and, and so was Rousville.
Yes.
We did, we redid them, but they were already paved.
That's correct. So we, we've done an additional nine kilometers of road.
Okay, so at that rate, we'd be about four or five years getting 35 kilometers done. Four times nine, thirty-six. What's the magic about 85%, excuse me, through the chair, what's the magic of 85%?
Well, what, what, what we're really looking at is 85% would put you probably between 20, 24 and 26 kilometers, which I think is, is, is a, is probably manageable with one grader. That's...
Okay.
It, it's, it's a bit of an arbitrary number, a bit of an 83 or 80. In that, in that particular sense, instead of a, a drop dead, you know...
Yeah.
A amount of gravel, gravel roads are remaining. Gives a little flexibility.
So follow-up question, then. So if I'm looking at, I mean, and we haven't done a surface treatment program this year, I don't think, or yet, we are, we're doing, no, no, we're just repaving bits and we're. So if I'm looking at nine kilometers in a, in a one shot, and we've got 35 kilometers to do, let's say it's six years, because we can't always do a, a full program each year. Obviously, I think staff is going to be coming back to us to replace one of these graders before that six-year period is up, or you're not. I mean, these two are not going to last another six years.
Through, through the chair, yeah. I, I would not see the 89 lasting that, that length of time. The 97, I, I expect would, would serve us well. So, and, you know, I would probably look at, in the next couple of years, at, at looking at a, at a financing, like a leasing similar to the excavator with those options. You know, give, you know, sufficient time where, where a decision can be made. You have, you have five or six years to, you know, make, make some headway in that, that direction. And at that time, if, if we're at a point where we're down to being, being able to, to manage one grader, then I would, I would suggest that the, the 97 would go at that time, and you would, you would keep the newer grader.
Any questions at this end? Okay, no, no other questions that I'm hearing. Could I have a mover for the recommendation, please? Counselor Hunter and the second there, Mr. Packwood, thank you very much. I'll call the question. All in favor of the recommendation? Aye, carried. Thank you. Moving on to information item seven N, Public Works Pickup Truck Fleet Fuel Management. And who will be speaking to do this?
The Director of Operations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Grant, you have the, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, we've done a review of our township pickup trucks in the fleet between March 2018 and March 2019 with respect to fuel consumption and performance. The, the table at the, at the bottom of the information item sort of indicates the, the liters of fuel used, the fuel cost, kilometers driven, and, and basically the, the efficiency of the, the average vehicle in the, in the fleet, which is about 16.45 liters per 100 kilometers. And that, that is comparable to the published fuel consumption ratings of various vehicles in our fleet, which range between 15 liters and 17 liters per 100 kilometers. So we're in line for the activities that we perform, which typically are heavier loads.
Mr. Mayor?
So this is a very interesting exercise, and, and it's very illustrative, and it does certainly illustrate that, that our average of 16.45 liters per 100 kilometers is within the range. But it, it is not a, a fuel management program. It's not a, it's not, it's not a program which accounts per liters on a per liter bought, per liter assigned to vehicle basis. So while it's good information, and I appreciate the work that was done to, to arrive at it, and I'm comforted by the fact that it, it, the range is, is correct. Are we still moving towards a fuel management program?
So through the chair, we certainly, certainly are refining some of the, the items. I, I would say that we have a, a basic fuel management program already. There are some refinements that we, that we need to do with respect to capturing all of that data that we will be doing moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Questions? No other questions? Thank you, thank you. There's no recommendation here, so thank you, thank you for that. I, I, I would like, personally, I would like to see this go a little bit further as well. I, I like what I'm seeing here, and if that, if that 16.45 is, is accurate, which I believe it is, this is, this is a good thing. But I would like to also see a little more detailed, a little more refinement. And you've said you're working on that, that's, that's good. Thank you. That's, that's the end of the action information items. We will now move to council inquiries or notice of motion. Am I hearing any?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a convention or a procedural thing that we use, whereas any item that appears in our correspondence packages can be separated out and brought before the table. So today, I asked the deputy clerk to bring out a sample motion, or a sort of a template motion received from Canadian National Railway to proclaim Rail Safety Week. And that was in our July 11th package. So I guess this is a notice of motion, that that motion to declare Rail Safety Week will appear at the council meeting on next week, actually. So that's, that's kind of my notice of motion.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing, hearing none, we'll move on to the Mayor's report. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for us to talk about?
I've got six things.
Good.
So first of all, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know whether it's good news or bad news, I'll, I'll leave it up to the individual to, to declare. But it is a rather momentous occasion today, the 15th of July being Counselor Dillaw's birthday.
I, I heard rumors to that effect.
So I think we should wish him happy birthday. That's the first thing. So happy birthday, Counselor.
Happy birthday.
Now, a couple of other things. You all, I think, saw a couple of emails from me concerning a control board. I've got to go the full distance. Lake Ontario-St. Lawrence River Control Board meeting. And I'm not going to say a lot about it here, other than if you read the Mayor's report, it's not quite as specific, the Mayor's column that's going to appear in this week's journal, it's not quite as specific as some of the other things that I've said, because I haven't been able to tie it down as definitively as I would like. But there will be a meeting, I'm quite sure, confident, with the Secretary at least, and probably one or two members of the control board sometime in September, so we can kind of debrief what happened this year and look to the future, which is 2020. And I'm not going to say anything more at this point. Second, third item, just to let you know that we have requested an AMO delegation with the Minister of Agriculture at the AMO meeting. There was a late request went in, it was after the date, but it concerns having a meeting with the Minister of Agriculture to try to get some of the land in the land bank released to farmers. And I, the reason it came up late was because I was pretty encouraged by what the Minister of Agriculture had to say at the meeting that he held with area farmers at the Winans Farm. And at, towards the end of that meeting, I mentioned to the Minister of Agriculture, and the two ministers were there, that, you know, we have 10,000 acres, and some of that land has been leased to farmers over that long period of time. They're not prepared to invest in tile drainage or a lot of reseeding, but they have been using and cropping the land over that period of time, and they would like to, an opportunity to get it into their own hands so that they can improve it. I was very encouraged by the minister's response, because he said, to quote him, "If it's farmland, it should be in the hands of farmers." So whether or not a delegation to help him persuade his cabinet colleagues to release some of that land is another issue. Now, on the same issue of the land bank, I think I did report at a previous meeting that we had had a meeting in Toronto concerning the Ontario Job Site Challenge, and the fact that the province said that they were looking for 500, 1,000, 1,500 acres as the possible potential site of the next big auto manufacturing plant to be located in Ontario. I think I reported that we were rather discouraged by the Toronto meeting, and so I held a follow-up meeting with our Member of Parliament and the Minister of Municipal Housing and Affairs on Friday. And I said, "You've got to explain to me what's happening here. I don't want to be playing games here. We think we've got a legitimate proposal if the province is interested truly in trying to identify such a parcel of land. We can do that for you, but I don't want to be playing games." So I have the most, I have the recent assurances as of Friday, that the province is serious, that the meeting in Toronto was kind of a hiccup on the road, if I can put it that way, and that we will be hearing more in more positive things in the near future. Next item, just a reminder that next Monday at 5:00 is a meeting with Steve Williams, our legal counsel. Just a quick comment on the art ramble that was mounted this past weekend at the Spencaville Riverfront Park. Pleased to join Councilor, Counselor Hunter, as we toured the, the art ramble scene. And I just wanted to make it public, I did phone Mary Moore, the chairman or the president of Spencaville Business and Community Connections today, and expressed my congratulations, because all in all, it was really quite a successful thing. And I don't know how many members managed to get here. Did you get here? Yeah?
I, I didn't, but my son and Brenda did. And by the way, she was the most beautiful face painting.
Oh, I see. Glad to know that. And then, last thing, just a report that CIO and I today attended a meeting. Again, it's just a planning meeting for our three... Again, it's just a planning meeting for our three council meeting, three-way council meeting on July the thirtieth. So I hope everybody's got that date in their calendar, we're all looking forward to that meeting as we talk about municipal modernization and efficiencies. That's my report.
Good, thank you. Any comments, questions on the mayor's report? Thank you. We now move to question period, do we, are there questions from the gallery?
I, my name is Jeff Barnard, I recently moved to Carden, Ten Anstree. I, I do have questions. I don't know how the etiquette works here, I have no idea whatsoever. What I've heard is pretty interesting. I, I could have made comments on a few things if I shut my mouth, like I said, I don't know the etiquette. When I first got here, a gentleman was showing, I guess, some software that, that I, I believe could be very helpful to, to people in, who wanna know what's happening, or how we can get things done from council, from our. And in the meantime, I, I'd like to know what, what's coming up at the meetings, like ahead. So if there's something that, that I, I feel concerned about, that I could attend and give my two cents about. Is there, is there any meetings, or a website I can go to that, that tells me such?
Yes, yes, there is, there's a township website. You just have to Google T W P E C, and you'll come right up to it. It'll, at least it'll come there. It gives you a multitude of information on that site. All of the past meetings that are recorded are shown on there as a, as a, like a YouTube format, which, which you can, which you can watch. The township for your area, which is Village of Cardinal, is, there's a one-eight-hundred number to reach the township here, 'cause it is long distance from Cardinal to Spencerville, fortunately. But just before I go any further, I would, I would, just for your benefit, I'd like to introduce the council to you. On the far, far side here is our advisory member, Mr. Packwood, who lives in the north part of the area. There's also another gentleman, Mr. Crawford, who lives in the Cardinal area. We have Counselor Hunter, who lives in the northern part of Ward Three, Ward Three, right, yes, area. Deputy Mayor Deschamps lives just outside the Village of Cardinal. I'm Hugh Cameron, and I'm the Ward One Counselor for the Village of Cardinal. This is Mayor Seo, he's, of course, the mayor of, of the township.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just before you introduce the last member, I just met this gentleman tonight in front of his home.
Oh, okay, good, good, all right. Sorry, I thought you said Anstree.
Yeah, yes. I was there, I was there on.
As well as Hoistree.
Yes.
Oh, all right, okay, all right. Okay, fine, so you're, you've been acquainted, and Counselor Dillaba is Ward Two, which is the, basically the Johnstown and North, and North, North area, so. So that's our composition of, of council. Staff is, staff is, is here. And if you have any questions, concerns, or requests, by all means, contact, contact the office, and you'll be put to the right direction. If you have questions about upcoming meetings or anything like that, again, I, I either go to the website or call back to, call back to the office, and you'll be well informed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, another question. When you were mentioning earlier, when you're going through, what you're going through, you, you're asking if there's any questions, does that not include?
No.
Okay.
The only time the gallery is allowed questions is when I ask for a question period from the, from the gallery. No, there is no intermittent questions allowed.
Man, I wanted to ask some questions, but I kept my mouth shut, 'cause I'm, I'm sure.
Just, just save them till question period, and we'll be more than happy to listen to them.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're, you're, you're most welcome.
I think the other thing to point out, Mr. Chairman, is that the agendas, I think, are on the website on the Friday afternoon. And so you can see what's coming up on, on the Friday afternoon. We get our packages on the Friday afternoon. The packages are generally, are they fully available on the website? They are, on Fridays. So you can get the whole package. And then the last thing, as you can see from tonight's agenda for the two presenters, the presenters or the delegations have to register prior to the meeting. And I think the deadline is, is it noon on the Monday or Friday?
Four o'clock on Monday.
Four o'clock on Monday?
Yeah, if I, if I may, if you see a package on the internet that you feel you have an item that you'd like to talk about before council has its deliberations or committee, then you can call the deputy clerk or myself and get on the agenda as a delegation for that.
Four o'clock that day.
By, as long as it's before four o'clock, yeah.
Pause. Pretty good, isn't it?
Yeah. We think so.
Also, also, just to follow up on, on Mayor Seo's comments, when you arrive, there's also packages here available for you to pick up if you haven't gone online. And Counselor Dillaba, I did introduce you, I believe?
You did.
Yes, yes, I did, okay, good. Any other questions?
No.
Great, thank you, and I hope to, hope to see you in the, many, many meetings, thank you. Okay, we have a closed session tonight, so what I'm going to do is we'll take a five-minute break to clear the, clear, do I need a motion? Who has it?
I think, I think I have it, I'm just looking for a second.
The deputy mayor has it.
Deputy mayor has it?
Oh, oh.
Deputy mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor John Hunter. The Committee of the Hold proceeds into closed session at nine forty-six PM. Or, excuse me, eight forty, as a premonition right there. PM, in order to address a matter pertaining to proposed or pending acquisition of land or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, specifically industrial land in the minutes of closed session dated June seventeenth, 2019, and labor relations or employee negotiations, specifically Public Works position classifications.
Thank you.
Now the five minutes.
Now the five minutes.
Call the question.
Call the question.
All, all in favor? Okay, we're now in open session?
Question on that, Mr. Chair?
Call the question.
Oh, I.
No, to reserve, going to the open session.
Didn't I already do that?
No.
You read it, but didn't call the question. All in favor?
All those in favor? Sorry about that, no, mine was gone, gone now.
Marked and carried.
I get the mark that's carried, do I? Where do we do, where do I do that? Carried, right there. Gotta do this one, too. Okay, so you're reading that one now?
No, you can read it. Go ahead.
It's moved, moved by Mayor, Mayor Seo and seconded by Counselor Dillaba, that Committee of the Hold approves the minutes of the closed sessions dated June seventeenth, 2019. All in favor?
All right.
Carried. And that goes there. Now, who's got the adjournment?
Moved by myself.
Actually, just, just, just before we adjourn, I'd just like to comment. Our August meeting of Public Works will be held on May twelfth with the Administration of Finance.
On May twelfth?
Hopefully. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do you have a?
August, on Longbury.
August twelve?
August twelfth, instead of the nineteenth.
Okay, and you're not finished reporting out from the closed session. You should report that the staff has been authorized to proceed on the recommendation that was discussed on the other issue.
And I was just gonna say that. So that, that, that has been said. Now, do we have an adjournment?
Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Seo, that the Committee of the Hold does now adjourn at nine thirty-seven PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it.